Good evening, and welcome everyone to this September the 16th, 2024 Suri County Commissioners Meeting. We welcome your attendance. Glad you're here. Looks like we got a pretty healthy crowd. Always good to see people interested in Suri County Government and the civics of our county. And we would like to welcome you to come back at any time. Think we're glad you're here tonight. Uh, so with that, I would like to call the meeting to order and uh, and the next thing on our agenda is I'm going to call on Commissioner Bill Goins to, for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Goins?
Want me to pray? Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful to be here tonight. Father, we thank you for your grace and for your mercy. While we pray that you be with us during this meeting, Father, we'd make decisions that are pleasing to you and are best for the citizens of this county. Father, we pray uh, for all those in attendance, that you give them safe travels as they go home tonight. Father, we pray for and to protect and to serve us and our sheriff, our sheriff's deputies, our EMS, any, anybody who stands to protect us, Father, we just pray that you be with them. We ask that you provide protection to our soldiers, foreign and abroad, and that you be with them, uh, and, and wrap your arms around them. Father, we just pray that you be with us again tonight and as we travel home and uh, we ask for these blessings in your name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which expands, one nation under God, indivisible, with due protection to the law.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Goins. And uh, at this time, we uh, I would like to get an approval for tonight's agenda. And gentlemen, I'm looking for a motion.
Let's approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion for Commissioner Goins. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, none, then agenda has been approved. Thank you. Also in your packet, you will see the meeting minutes of September the 3rd, 2024. I'm sure you've had time to look them over. Looked, they looked okay to me, but uh, if they meet your approval, I'm looking for a motion to approve those meeting minutes of September the 3rd, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion for Commissioner Mark Marion to approve. Do I hear a second?
So moved.
Commissioner Harris, seconds. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none. Meeting minutes of September the 3rd of this board has been approved. Moving right on down, we have a consent agenda. We have a few bullet points with some detail in the um, program here tonight. And uh, as usual, I'm going to call on our county manager, Mr. Chris Knopf, to present the consent agenda, but I'm going to ask him to read out the bullet points and a brief description on what it contains. If you will, Mr. Manager, go right ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item of the Tax Department End of Month Sumories, Charges and Reports. Next is a request for qualifications to be released for design services. This is for the Sheriff's Office, the 1974 jail, the 2002 jail facility, or now we call it the Judicial Center Annex. Next item is the Health and Nutrition Center Fee Schedule, which is adopted by the Board of Health at a recent meeting. Next item are the closed session minutes over the last few months. These are for approval but not release. Next item is the Health Department Equipment Purchase Request. This is for lab equipment and the funds are within their budget. Next item is the Disaster Deployment Policy Request from the Emergency Management folks here at the county. And the last item is Budget Amendment Number Two submitted by the Finance Office, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. Gentlemen, you have read and heard about the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion approval to pass the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Let's do approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion for Commissioner Bill Goins. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Marion. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, um, I'd like to ask the county manager, what, what were the cost numbers on this RFQ?
Uh, we have a budget of 200,000.
Okay. And and that would be for the, the entire architect, just the feasibility?
Feasibility and, and design.
And design, which would include a schematic set of plans and, and that sort of thing?
Yes.
But this board hasn't approved any, uh, I mean, this doesn't commit us in any way to going forward with a, uh, or a timeline. This doesn't involve a timeline or uh, an affirmation of the project. Is that correct?
No, you'd receive proposals for the services. You would select someone, but this doesn't include construction, administration, or any construction.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Any other items that you would like to talk about? Have a motion in a second to approve the agenda, the consent agenda. If there's no other question, I'm going to call it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The motion carries and the consent agenda for tonight has been approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving right along, we've got some special recognitions. Now I'm trying to keep from mixing my look here. Can you see me coming down? We'll point never which way. Yes, sir. I believe the first one is the uh, for the Suri County EMS, some certificates of recognition for some uh, demonstrating high integrity and outstanding service and saving lives. And if you will, Mr. Goins Distributors, please, I think those are all five years. See that they are? About five saves? I got a whole handful of them here.
We'll just do all of them.
Okay. You want to read them?
We'll just do all these together. Aleah Dobie, I'll just call your name as you come down. Aaron Williams, Lane Bledsoe, Wendell Jenkins, Robert Blizzard, Matthew Whitley. And this is the County of Suri, uh, Suri County Emergency Services. Uh, all these folks are hereby presented this certificate of recognition in honor of their five life saves to Suri County. The Board of Commissioners is pleased to award you the certificate of recognition for your demonstration of high integrity and outstanding service. Present this the 16th day of September, 2024 by the Suri County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker Chairman, Mark Marion Vice Chairman, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. Aleah.
We, we congratulate you. Any of you folks want to comment here at the public forum? Tell us about some of your life experiences and saves? Not time to, always time to spring into action, but not tonight. Is that right? Eric, what's going on here? Okay. All right. With that said, uh, Mr. Harris, you got the others. I believe these are 10 year, uh, 10 saves. You will?
These are 10-year saves.
10s individually.
Yeah, I'm sorry. 10 life saves, yes. Um, and these are certificates of recognition from the County of Suri to each of these individuals. They are hereby presented this certificate of recognition in honor of 10 life saves to the citizens of Suri County. The Board of Commissioners is pleased to award you this certificate of recognition for your demonstration of high integrity and outstanding service presented this 16th day of September, 2024 by the Suri County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker Chairman, Mark Marion Vice Chairman, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. And I have uh, Stefani Blizzard.
Come on down.
I'm sorry. It, it's a, okay. I, I try not to butcher names, but I butchered that one, so. Uh, Dusty Jackson. Mason Gwynn. You the Patrick County Gwynns? You and I are kin, buddy. My mother was a Willis Gap Gwynn. Okay. A Heart Ridge Road. Oh, we kin. You might not want to admit that or tell anybody, so.
We're gonna let him comment off of that.
Colby Cooper. I'm not kidding any Coopers, so. You're, you're good. All right. Kaylee Mastromonica. Yep. The harder they are, the better I am. The easy ones, I.
Congratulations.
Yeah. And Ted Radford. Ted's not here tonight. I'll give this to.
And again, we congratulate each and every one of you. And certainly 10 saves, that's remarkable. And I'm not, I'm going to give you the same invitation, even now that we found out we got some cousin kinship here. I'll let any of you make a comment about your service or anything about EMS or about your saves. Don't be bashful.
I know.
Oh, all right. Good. Eric, what's going on here? No participation. Okay, we have one more. And uh, Mr. Michael Johnson, are you present? He is. While he's coming on up, I just want to say, you know, we appreciate you folks at our EMS. I've always felt like that if you fall on your face with a heart attack or run out in front of a car and the ambulance pulls up, we're in good shape. And I want to say to Mr. Johnson, Michael Johnson, paramedic, Suri County Emergency Services, is hereby presented this certificate of recognition in honor of 25 life saves. Wow. To, and this is to the citizens of Suri County. This Board of Commissioners is pleased to award you this certificate of recognition for your demonstration of high integrity and outstanding service. Your award is presented this 16th day of September, 2024 by the Suri County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. And congratulations. And congratulations, sir. Wow. Again, we appreciate everything that the EMS does, and we do feel like we are the county that most EMS organizations chase for performance. I've always thought that long before I came over here, and I still believe that's true today. And when we get around in our circles of other folks that represent other counties, one thing they have in common is they always want to talk about the performance of our Surrey County EMS. And for that, I congratulate each and every one of you and Eric Southern, our director as well. Let's give them all a nice round of applause. Thank you. Training officer. Training, who's here? Mr. Harold, the training officer, are you here? Okay, right here, right here. Justin, we appreciate you. How about coming on up and joining us? We'll get somebody to take a picture. How's that? Can we do that? Eric, I want you up here. Eric, come on up. Eric, come on up and we, Eric, the rest of them is turning me down, but I'm going to ask you if you've got a comment on these saves. I'm going to get one taker out of the crowd. Go right here.
So, thank you, Chairman Tucker. We do appreciate this. Appreciate all of y'all giving us the opportunity to come up here tonight. Usually this group is very talkative, and I can assure you they do talk. I know you've heard the numbers tonight, 5, 10, and 25 saves. And a lot of times people just say, well, that's just a number. But I can assure you to each person that's standing up here that has ever received a save before, that number means so much more to each of us because of the lives, the friends, the families that this has touched. So again, we thank you. We appreciate the kind words, and we're very proud to service county.
All right, hang on, let's get a picture.
Can you get her one?
They may have to get us some up in front back.
You got them all? Come on up. You got them all? I'm telling you. All right, another picture.
We've got some more.
Yeah, we've got some more behind you.
Hold the pose.
Anybody else?
Well, Catherine, of course.
Anybody else? Is that it? All right, thank you. Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Harold's looking over you. I didn't see him. Fine, I couldn't drag a word out.
Thank you.
All right, we'll let a little, we'll let a few folks trying to get out for the noise, and then we'll get to the next part.
Let me look at the header again.
Call her. Give her a call tonight. You should give her a call tonight. I'm not going to ruin it for you. Good. Really good.
Okay, I think we've got a little cleared out here. So also tonight, we have some, a couple of special recognitions, and I'm going to call on Commissioner Marion and Commissioner Goings, and it involves our Surrey County Inspections Department. So if you will, I'll kick off with you, Commissioner Marion. All right, you got yours first, okay.
Keith Cogger, come on up. Keith has been elected to be Vice President of North Carolina Building Inspector's Association, and to serve at the state level is a good thing, and it says a lot about Surrey County and our people. So we congratulate you on that achievement. County of Surrey, Keith Cogger is hereby presented this certificate of recognition as an expression of the board's appreciation for being elected Vice President for North Carolina Building Inspector's Association. Board recognizes your representation for Surrey County on the North Carolina Building Inspector's Association Board of Directors, and appreciates your leadership and the dedication that you provide to the citizens of Surrey County. Presented this the 16th day of September 2024 by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. Congratulations.
You're going to speak, you want to talk about your position? Yeah, go ahead.
Say a word.
I sure will. First of all, thank you, Commissioners, and for your support with us. Our job's not very easy sometimes, and we do the best we can to serve the county and keep people safe. This position that was voted on is, Surrey County has never had that seat before. It's always been with the bigger counties, the larger cities. So for us to be sitting at the table with them, it's a, we have a role of voice now, and we can hopefully push Surrey County, and we're on the mat now. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Keith.
Mr. Marion? With this next certificate, I had the opportunity to go to Wilmington to the inspections conference. And we had a total surprise. We surprised this next fellow. His wife Stephanie was in on it. Keith was in on it. He said, I thought you was coming down here to support Keith. Well, I was, but he didn't know. Come on up here, Kevin. Kevin Connor. Get you that right hand. Well, some of you don't know that the big surprise was Kevin was awarded the Inspector of the Year of the State of North Carolina. Where'd you get over here? Right here. From the County of Surrey to Kevin Connor, you're hereby presented this certificate of recognition as an expression of the board's appreciation for being named North Carolina Building Inspector of the Year at the 2024 North Carolina Building Inspector's Association Conference. The board recognizes your achievement and the outstanding service that you provide the citizens of Surrey County. Presented this the 16th day of September 2024 by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. Congratulations.
Come on here. Give us a word.
Well, I don't know. You ask Keith, I won't shut up.
That's all right, go ahead.
But I couldn't have done this without the support of the county, the Commissioners that's standing here, along with the county manager and assistant county manager. I couldn't have done this, and I couldn't have done it without the support of Keith, that we look to one another to make it better here for the county. I always want to treat everyone in the county the way I want to be treated because that's how I was raised. You go out here and you treat these people right, and they will treat you right. So you always talk to them nice, and that's what I've always had in my mind to do, and that's what I will do. I've told Assistant County Manager, Ms. Snow, that once somebody told me I couldn't do that, I wouldn't do this job. I strive of making this county better and treating people nice and doing everything it's possible to make things work. But of most of all, during this past year, it's been pretty rough. I couldn't have done it without one person, and that person is my wife, Stephanie. I will tell this, she's went through some stuff this year with cancer and still stood behind me 100% and never stopped. This job takes a lot of time and a lot of hours. I'm used to that because of what she's done. I know I'm being recognized, but I would, if it's okay with the Commissioners, I would love to have her come up here.
Stephanie, come on up, please.
With, like I said, without her, I couldn't have done this. She used to work for the county herself for 20, 21 years. So she knows how it is and how things are going, how things go, and how you have to work and strive hard to make things better here for not only your department, but for the county as a whole. It's like Keith had told me, this was a total surprise to me, but he did tell me this is a big honor because of 240, 14 counties. I got this award in Wilmington. I think the whole county knew but me. Man, that was a fact. So I do thank you, and I thank all of y'all for standing behind me and supporting me and supporting our department. And I especially thank my wife for doing that, too.
Give them both a round of applause. All right. Thank you, Kevin. Yes, ma'am. Yep. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, bud. Thank you. Get the microphone, Bill. All right, moving right along, and we certainly appreciate the service of all these valuable employees, both in the EMS and in our inspections department, and with the achievements that you've accomplished, and we thank you all very much. Moving right on tonight's agenda, it is time now for the open forum. And with that, I'm going to welcome anyone that wants to come up to the open forum to tell us what's on your mind concerning Surrey County Government, civics, or most anything else. You don't get too rough on us. So if you will, we're going to open up this forum now, and we're going to give you two or three minutes if you'll come up. Now's the time to tell us what's on your mind. So the open forum is open, this session is open forum. So if you've got something on your mind, now's your time. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, and pull your microphone down if you will, so we can hear you, and give us your name and give us your phone number. We'll ask you to try to limit it to two or three minutes. Thank you. Go right ahead.
All right, Crystal Ritter, 336-648-1485. You said last month to do it during open forum. I have a few more photos of the property of work that we've done around the house, and so I'll give them to the clerk then. But it's coming along. We're working on things and getting things done. And anyway, just want to let you, give you an update that what we've, you know, that we've been working.
Glad to hear you making some improvement. And if you will, give them to the clerk, and he'll hand them out to us at a later time, and we'll all review them. Thank you, Mrs. Ritter. Okay. Eric, are you with us tonight? Well, not quite yet. How about, I've jumped one. Ed, Ed, are you there? Hello? Ed with us tonight?
I am.
Yes, sir. Okay. I believe I got ahead of myself just a little bit. I think next, on the next item on our agenda. Oh, open forum, yes. Any others, any other takers? Oh, I got one more. Sorry, Blake, come on up. I thought we were done. My fault. Yes, sir.
Evening, Blake Moyer, Surrey County Economic Development. A little informal for you tonight, just to keep it light. I have a small gift for you all in relation to Project Vista. It's a challenge coin with Project Vista map of Surrey, or the state Surrey County, and then NCFI on the other side. As you're all aware, this in the city of Mount Airy, along the west of industrial park. Just a small memento. I know it's been a little while since we've won a project, but it's not going to be the last time we all win a project. So we wanted to start a little bit of tradition of sorts. And so every time we win another one of these, we'll do another one like this and keep the party going, so.
We'll be looking for some more in the future, I hope.
Yes, sir. Appreciate y'all's participation in that project and glad to get it going.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Blake. Okay, any others tonight? We're open forum. Okay. I believe this time we are through open forum, and so we will move into the next round. Do we have Mr. Ronald Lewis with the Foundation Forward? Yes, there you are. Mr. Lewis, if you will, come on up and tell us what's on your mind.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and staff. It's a distinct pleasure and honor to be here with you tonight. I'm an old county manager. It took me four counties to get my 30 years in. So I, you have a very fine staff here, and that's how I am able to appear before you tonight. The last 10 years since I retired from county management, I've been with an organization called Foundation Forward. We build the Charters of Freedom across the country. I'm here to apologize to you because somehow or another, you managed to get off of my radar. And that, I want to say to you that I'm very sorry for that. As I was recently looking at the counties I had remaining to do in North Carolina, by the way, we have built and dedicated 35. There's four more under construction, which makes us to right at 40. And there's 60 more counties to go in North Carolina if, to put a Charters of Freedom in all 100 counties. So when I was doing the math, it popped up on my chart that we have not dedicated the Charters of Freedom that's in the lawn of your beautiful historic courthouse. And if you will accept my apology, Mr. Chairman, we would like to conduct a dedication with you. Now, Mr. Wright answered my cold call when I discovered this, and he has been working with me very carefully to make sure that we're all on the same page, and we all expect the same results from our dedication. This time of the year is a great time of the year because the schools are in session, and hopefully we could have a high school band or a chorus with some patriotic music and have a, just a real fun day, Mr. Chairman, as we dedicate the Charters of Freedom to the citizens of Surrey County. I look forward to working with your staff as we pursue that to make that happen.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, we will probably take you up on that invitation, and no apologies are necessary. And we just recently completed, in most recent history, the building here, and we're still adding to some of its glamour. So we're happy to have you come and do that at a later date. If you will work with staff and get it on our radar, they will run it by our board, and we'll all try to find a date and a time in which that will work. So thank you for all you do for the Foundation Forward project, and we'll look forward to having you back here at a dedication ceremony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
In the near future.
I have two more minutes.
Sure.
I want to say that the main reason we got off of the North Carolina map was because people around the country started discovering what we were doing. On July the 4th, we dedicated the 60th Charters of Freedom in the country at the Ronald Reagan Library in California. We're currently in final arrangements with the Jimmy Carter Library in Georgia because we're a nonpartisan group. We try to keep both sides of the aisle on our radar screen, and we'll be building at the Carter Library this fall for a dedication, if, before winter or shortly thereafter. But North Carolina is my responsibility, and I told our group, let's get back to our original business plan, which was to build all 100 counties in North Carolina. which was to build all 100 counties in North Carolina and, and quit being pulled all over the country. Now, that's not to say that if we get an opportunity to go to a presidential library in another part of the country that we won't go. But I was successful in convincing our founder and our staff that we need to finish North Carolina. So that's what we're here tonight for, Mr. Chairman. And one last thought. It's, it's on my heart to, to tell you that, what a pleasure it was to sit here tonight and see you recognize, if not the finest EMS system in North Carolina, it's certainly one of the finest. Before I went into county management, I started in emergency medical services, a pioneer back in the 70s. So I've seen it grow and I've seen it develop. But from day one, Surrey County has had a top-notch, top-tier, number-one system that North Carolina as a whole should be very proud of. And honestly, Mr. Chairman, the finest EMS professional that I have ever known in my entire 75 years calls Surrey County his home. And you probably know who I'm talking about. I'm talking about Johnny Shelton. What a fabulous EMS professional that this man was. It's also good to see you recognize your building inspections department. That's your tax base. And your number-one responsibility is to grow the tax base so that you can provide for the citizens. Now, I'm through lecturing you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm going to disappear with a promise to you and with your staff. We will have a great dedication here in beautiful Surrey County of your charters of freedom.
Absolutely. We look forward to it and thank you, Mr. Lewis. Gentlemen, any questions, Mr. Lewis?
I want to comment that this is wonderful out here. It's an honor to have it on the grounds. It is. Each time I come, I try to walk by.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
It is an honor and we are grateful to your organization and we hope the school kids and, and all of our citizens can come out and enjoy this and understand what their basic constitutional rights are that sadly I see some erosion of, I think, in the United States, particularly our First Amendment right of freedom of speech. And so this is very refreshing and as a county commissioner, I'm very proud of it and very grateful to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Corser Harris. Thank you all.
The gentleman that you probably contact, was in contact, we had to get this going in Surrey County, sadly passed away. Grant Thayer, he was commander of Marines Corps over in Mount Airy, VFW. He passed away last year. And, but he's, he was very happy that it, that it proceeded on and was built here on the courthouse grounds. And I just wanted to let you know that, that he was, he was happy that he got to see it completed before he passed.
Amen. I'm honored. I, I am a Marine as well. And he was the driving force behind bringing this charters of freedom to your beautiful county. I'm sad to hear that he's no longer with us.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you being here and appreciate your organization for.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, we thank you and it is a beautiful, beautiful thing out front and we're proud of it every time we walk by it and we hope people now and many, many generations, future generations will enjoy it and all that it stands for. And it's a compliment to our facility here at the historic courthouse. And thank you for your input into that and we look forward to having a dedication. Come back and see us anytime. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we'll have a great day when we celebrate the charters of freedom. Thank you all.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lewis. Thank you. Okay, Ed, you still with us? Hello, Ed?
Still here.
Still there. Okay. Ed, you're up as the next item on our agenda and I believe you're here to address an update on the Red Hill Creek Community Center. So if you can hear me, go right ahead.
Okay, and I can hear you. Okay, so about a month ago, this matter came up for review by the board, having surplus the property some months ago. And there's a beer, a bid out floating around that I'm not really familiar with. But the community has rallied and Gail Brown addressed the board, I guess, two meetings ago about putting together a proposal for the Red Hill Creek Community Council to take control of the center. And we had requested of them a detailed budget, minutes, plan of action. And those documents are not yet available. I talked with Sharon Lowe today, who represents either Ms. Brown or the council, I'm not sure which. And they somehow, they, they, they did not understand that the information requested needed to be in writing and, you know, fairly detailed for the board's consideration. So my recommendation is to give them another month to put their plan together and their budget and for the board to consider it at that time.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. Gentlemen, anyone here want to weigh in on that suggestion?
I, I love his recommendation, but it seems like we have a lot of folks here tonight. Are we going to allow them a little time to add to what they wanted to say last time? Or just go ahead and table it for another month?
Well, if I've understood counsel here, he's saying that they don't have anything written as requested. I mean, I certainly am not going to be rude and say that none of you can come up, so if you will. Ms. Brown, yes, come on up if you want to and, and give us a brief response to what our legal counsel's had to say.
Well, all these people sitting back here are with the Red Hill Creek Center. And the reason the proposal has not been planned is because Saturday we just had the, a big community meeting. And so we were bombarded with questions and plans for the center. And that's why we need the extension on the plan. But we had a huge turnout. It was just, it was just great and very exciting. We had over 50 people to attend the dinner. And we, we received over $300 in donations from those 50 people. So I'm hoping that will show you that we, we really are interested in saving that center. We, I had a lot of questions that people want answers to. And one of them is why the building is being sold. And, you know, if you're selling our center, are the other centers going to be sold? You know, why is ours, you know, being singled out? And the land that was donated by Mr. Norman, we think should be kept in the center to honor him for his donating the property and wanting to see the community to continue to grow and be a place where people can come out and have family events. And we want to know what the money is going to be used for if, when it's sold. I mean, could it not come back to us? And maybe we can buy some more property to rebuild another center somewhere if you all need to sell that. And we have never asked for a grant. We've never asked the county for money. We've always been self-sufficient and we will continue to be self-sufficient. We rented the heads, to the Head Start program at a very low monthly rent because we knew the, the importance of that program. And we never, in the 50, 40 years they were there, we never increased the rent. And we paid the power bill and nine times out of 10, the power bill was more than the rent that we received. And I do have a petition. We went around to the community. We have over 100 signatures that I will give. I have the originals over here. I will give, leave that. And we have already come up with some proposals that will bring in over $300 a month. We have, there's people that's wanting the building and the building will be used for the next three months. You know, and so we're going to, we're, we're a community that feels the agreement should be upheld. And we feel we are being penalized for renting the building to the Head Start program. We didn't profit from this agreement financially. The power bill, which I've just explained, was more than the rent. And we're excited about having the building back. We enjoyed the social time, talking and meeting old friends and new friends. Newcomers were excited. We had a fellow there who has moved into the community and from, retired from the army. And he said it was just a pleasure to be able, we went to his house to get him to sign the petition. And that's when we, he explained that he had never been in a community where he felt the freedom to go out and talk, you know, to his neighbors and, and he was enjoying that. He, he said he would like that. So we just hope, we know that you all are elected to do for the people and we, we just hope that you will see them and continue to let us have the building.
Thank you. And for the record tonight and for the viewing audience, tell us again your name and what your participation is in this project. That's all right.
My name is Gail Brown. My number is 336-352-3384.
And your participation in this project is, you're just, you're just taking it up for the, on behalf of your community, Ms. Brown?
Yes, I'm the president of the.
Counsel.
Yes, the council.
Okay. Okay, and when do you think you would have a plan ready that we, that?
Oh, I, we will, within two weeks.
Let, let me just interject that, that what we requested was a written budget, a written plan and documentation of charitable status. And the organization is a nonprofit North Carolina corporation, but it is not a charitable organization. So we will have to, i- i- if the, if the board desires to convey the center to the council, we have that hurdle to face. When I talked with Sharon Lowe, she said that she is working on a charitable application for the IRS. And that's really detailed and it takes a long time to process. But, you know, i- i- if, if we end up with a good foundation and plan of action, you know, the, the board may be interested in pursuing that. But keep in mind that the property has been surplused and there's a offer floating around out there.
Could we, could we continue to lease the property for a dollar a year, the way it's been done?
Yes. With, with a lease and we would need, we would, we would need a renunciation of the lease from Wyvetti. And we would need a revision of the lease with the council.
Go right ahead.
So the current, they're not a charitable, charitable organization, but they're, they're a 501(c)(3), so.
No, no, they are not.
Pardon me?
They're, they are not. They are a nonprofit North Carolina corporation, but they're not charitable.
Now, would not preclude us from a, a lease arrangement with them, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And, and, but the Wyvetti thing is just a formality, is that? I mean, I'm, Mr. Johnson and I are on the Wyvetti board and I think that's just a formality. I mean, Wyvetti has no interest in, in.
Well, they've asked for $1,500 for the playground equipment.
There's.
I want you and Mr. Johnson to work on that.
Yeah, I don't, you know.
I think in listening, in listening to Ms. Brown talk about, you know, what they, what Wyvetti paid and some months, they paid more on the power bill than what Wyvetti paid, and I'm sure that's true. I mean, I, I think that's a wash. I mean, $1,500. The, the reason why Betty wanted $1,500 is because they was thinking we're going to sell it, okay? But I, I, to answer you, one of your, one of your first questions your community has, yes, we surplused it as other properties after suppressing, no, nobody came like y'all did. And so we had offers to sell and we sold. But we, we did do that, but we also can rescind what we've done. You know, if it works out that way. So that's a question, that's one question to answer for you. If you're, if we're rushing things up, I like Commissioner Goins' idea. Give us a dollar a year, you know, if that's the, but.
We like that.
We, we want it. But I, but I have to admit, I won't be on here much longer, but I don't want a building in the, in the county's name that's going to have to be kept up.
Right.
You call us, says our commode stopped up, you know, I don't, I don't want none of that.
That will not happen.
And so I'm, I'm just, I'm, I was hoping something could be resolved. I would encourage y'all to come back in your timeframe, not to rush you, but.
Well, I'd say, I'd say two weeks might be a little early and it sounds like you've retained counsel as well, Ms. Lowe.
Your lawyer's not as fast as they think they are.
Sounds, sounds like Ed Waltz, our attorney, and Ms. Lowe still have some conversation. And we, they're still looking for some type of business plan or some type of assurance that, that they have asked you for heretofore that Ms. Lowe says isn't prepared yet. So let's not make this a two-week appointment tonight. Let's see when, in the next nearest future, see if you could comply with those requests that we had previously requested of you the last time and that your lawyer agreed upon.
I would say, I would say at least a month.
Okay, at least a month.
Why don't we give them six weeks?
All right.
I mean, come on.
We'll give them two months. I don't care what we. You know, when do you think a reasonable date, comfortable date for you would be, Ms. Brown, for your group to come back and make your official response to our request on your business plan and going forward, what you're going to do and what you propose and what you're going to do with it? When, when would it be comfortable for you in the, your nearest date that you could think of?
And budget.
A month. Because I'm telling you, with dealing with this, I can, I mean, I, it's been, it's crunch time.
Would be our, would be our, would be about two months out.
Okay.
Let's shoot for that meeting date and that's not etched in stone. You would still need to call and go through the channels, get it on the agenda, let the agenda be approved. Make sure we're ready on our side, that we could ask you questions to see if we felt like you were ready before we presented. Let's shoot for that meeting date. And you know what it is that, that the attorneys have said that we'd like to see? We're going to give you a little more time and on or about that date, not before that date. Call and if you will, call the clerk to the board and, and get on the agenda. And if we're lined up and we have time to work it into that agenda, we will address it at our next opportunity, even either that time, that meeting or a meeting shortly after. Ed, anything else?
No, sir, I think that's covered.
Okay.
I have, let me, let me tell you one more comment, since you fellas are on the board with Wyvetti. When Wyvetti took the building, all our supplies, our tables, our chairs, our refrigerator, all, all the kitchen supplies. all the kitchen supplies has been taken off. And I talked to Rhonda with the Head Start Program. And I told her, I said, since all of our equipment was sold or, or been taken, I said, we would like to trade the playground equipment because we're going to have to purchase more. And so I've never heard from her, but I would like that to be.
Well, that's all in the works of your next plan and presentation and ask, and then that's subject to this board's approval. And so work on those things and we will look forward to having you back on or near that date. Gentlemen, anything else? Any other questions?
Yes, not still young. May I make a couple?
Please do.
Okay. The, I'd like to know what, what other buildings do we have under similar circumstances that we hold title to like this one? Are there others? I, I'm not aware of any, I, I don't think. I know we have the old.
I'm not aware of any either.
White Plains and Beulah, they're old.
They're old, they're old schools though. Yeah. Well, it's old school.
Old school.
Well, it's down there at the, but it's recycling, yeah.
I'm not sure what the original use of that building.
The realtors had it at one time, but, um, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say too that the, um, the, the playground thing, that's all small stuff you, that can be fixed. But I want to say too that to me, you know, the fact that, that there are concerns that, you know, that the Red Hill Creek community may feel slighted or or, or left out or whatever, or why, or being picked on and why are we doing this? I will say that's not the case a- at all. You know, a lot of these decisions are strictly business decisions for me. But I want to say too that, that the rural communities like Red Hill Creek, the places like Mountain Park, places like Shoals and Rockford and all the other little places in Surrey County that, that aren't Mount Ari Dobson, Elkin and Pilot Mountain and all that. Those places are just as important to me as, matter of fact, they're, they're probably more important to me because those people are the ones that are always left out. And that's why this board is concentrated on getting broadband and high-speed internet to these places that have been always left out. And that is not my intentions at all. Matter of fact, I would probably show favoritism to a, a place like Red Hill Creek over, over somewhere else. So I, I just want that to be known.
Thank you.
Well, we're not gone so far that we still don't have an opportunity to work this out. But it's going to take, it sounds like to me, you've got some homework to do and you've got some questions that we still have unanswered. Business plans and status of your organization and, and an idea of what you're going to do and how it might be of community use. And, you know, I, we certainly are not picking on you guys or trying to separate you from any other thing. We don't want to be in the real estate business with rundown buildings that nobody's occupying. Of course, you can understand that.
Right.
Not fair to the other taxpayers. But if there's community use there, I mean, you know, you need to demonstrate that use and we'll talk about that going forward. So let's plan on that November the 18th, not before. And then if thereabouts, we will come and if you will, hopefully you will have your attorney, Ms. Lowe on board. And she'll be communicating with our attorney, Ed Waltz. And in the, in the meantime, you will have a prepared request and all of the details that we don't know the answers to tonight. Then you come back and talk to us again.
Okay.
Is that all right? Is that fair?
Thank you, Jim.
All right. Thank you.
Pull her out of retirement and get her to work.
I'm sorry.
Pull her out of retirement and put her to work.
Point to you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Okay. I believe we're down to the county manager's items. With that, Mr. Chris Knopf, if you will, please proceed. If you want to hesitate just a moment, we'll let them. We'll let them have a moment here. Mm-hmm. Pretty good turnout. Thank you, folks, for coming. Thank you for coming. I believe about one more item or two. We'll have plenty of room in here. Okay, Mr. Knopf, please proceed.
I only have a few items here, Mr. Chairman. First one is the board needs to select a delegate to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals Conference at November 14th and 15th in Raleigh. This is where all the legislative goals have been submitted from across the state will be prioritized into a final report and then submitted to the General Assembly shortly thereafter. I know in the past couple of cycles, this is an event that only occurs every other year. Commissioner Johnson has been the attendee. I'm not sure what his disposition is this time around since he's about to leave us. But need to get that person appointed so we can get them registered and get that trip planned.
Yeah. Any volunteers, gentlemen? I will say that, not looking for an excuse here, but I have a little bit of a pressing need not to be out of town on those dates. And with that said, I would love to fill in and do it and, but I don't think it's going to be me this time.
If y'all don't think I'll do some, do some things there and then two weeks later I'm gone, I, I'll do it again.
We'd be delighted, Mr. Johnson. That just took you gentlemen to death.
Yes.
All right. We'll certainly take you. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Okay.
Start writing things down now that I can take.
All right. Looking for a motion to appoint Mr. Johnson to go down to do our bidding for us at Raleigh. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Oh.
Okay, second. Motion is second. Okay, we, you're in. Like flying. Thank you. Next was the Commissioner, Commissioner Goins and Commissioner John, Marion second. Yep, unanimous.
All right.
All right.
I wasn't going to go if it wasn't unanimous.
All right, Chris.
Next item is memorandum of agreement with Wyvetti. These are to basically pass through funds that we receive from the North Carolina Department of Transportation for the Rural Operating Assistance Program. These are funds received annually that assist with elderly and disabled transportation and employment transportation for those who don't have other options. It's been historically here in Surrey County, these funds have been passed through to Wyvetti to use for those purposes. They are responsible for using them in that manner and reporting likewise back to the county. So this MOA is before you this evening. Laura advised earlier today that the letter from DOT with the actual amount of funds most likely won't be here till November. Yep. 245,000 last year.
All right.
That's what the state provided in funds for transportation for our elderly in Surrey County. Did we vote? Didn't have a discussion or do I have another question?
Well, I guess we'll look and see if we can get a motion to pass this memorandum of agreement with, with the rope project with the Yakton Valley Economic Development District. Do I hear a motion? That we accept this memorandum of agreement?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Harris, do I hear a second?
I'll be glad to second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none. Motion carries. Now, Mr. Johnson?
Well, I just wanted to say that in our, in our, in our Wyvetti meetings, it seemed like rope funds is always mentioned in the transportation thing. And so the way I see it works, when, when they do things, Surrey County sort of has a little part in it. I mean, the funds don't go directly about Wyvetti. We have a part in doing our part. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I think, was it through social services maybe handles it or?
No, it comes through the finance office.
It does.
Yeah, Laura, come on.
Just, you know.
Come on up and tell us how that works, Laura.
I deal with Jeff at Wyvetti, Jeff Cockrum. And he does a lot of the reporting and prepares everything, sends it up to finance. We review it and approve it and then it gets submitted.
And you, then you send it, then you send it to the state?
Jeff actually handles. I send it back to him and he submits everything.
I'm just saying.
But it comes through us.
Then it goes back, then they, now when it comes back from Raleigh, does it come back to you before it goes to Jeff or? I'm just curious.
We get the distribution around November of every year and they send a request for that, that fund, those funds, Wyvetti does.
That's fine. Cause Eddie and I have been on, I, you know, Eddie's been on longer than I have. And for a long period of time, there was a problem that they always said Raleigh. I don't, I know Surrey County is not the problem, but you know, they always mention rope funds.
Okay.
Other things that, you know, you're three months behind or four months behind and things like that. Luckily, that's been aired out quite a bit.
Okay.
Few years, but.
Okay.
But I just, I just want to get a little more detailed about the rope funds. Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, Chris?
Last item, there's a memo from Samantha Ainge to the board. Dr. Michael Gentry has been the physician member on the Board of Health for a number of years. His term will expire at the end of this month. He is eligible and willing to serve a third term. If you all were to see fit to make that happen, it would need to take effect September 1st of this year.
Okay. Gentlemen, we're looking for a motion to reappoint Dr. Michael Gentry to the Surrey County Board of Health. Motion for Commissioner Bill Goins, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Marion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries and congratulations and thank you to Dr. Michael Gentry for serving another term. Chris, are there any other appointments to any of our boards that we are aware of, Andrew, for the month of September? Do, um. Okay. All right. Chris?
That's all I have. We do not need closed session this evening, so we can adjourn after general county business.
All right. It's not getting late, but it's getting about time to wind up. So gentlemen, I'm going to allow some time for commissioner comments and then I'll start with you, Commissioner Marion. Any general county business things hit your mind tonight?
I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's a good night recognizing the paramedics and their lives, their saves. And that dedication and appreciation from the community. And, you know, and we recognize their building inspectors too. And, you know, they probably, they, they don't have too pleasant of a job when they go out and face contractors every day and, and fussed at or, you know, but that takes dedication too. And I just thank everybody and Worksford County Government and appreciate everything everybody does. Matter of fact, Baron Isaacs, Director of Emergency Services is, we're, we're heading to Raleigh, centers the meetings over with, our meeting tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Goins?
I just appreciate everybody coming out. Appreciate the Red Hill Creek community for showing up tonight and having a passion for their community. Like Mr. Mr. I mean, Commissioner Harris, I think that says a lot for our rural communities and, and their need to have a place to, to meet and to get together. So my hat's off to them showing up tonight.
Okay, Commissioner Harris?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say Wednesday morning at 10:30, we're having a walk through with all the folks that were involved in the project down there between the railroad track and the library and Elkin on the road, the county, the money we got from legislature to do those projects, those water projects. That one is finishing up and there'll be a walk through down there right below the library where the project is on the Big Elkin Creek, Wednesday morning at 10:30, if anybody wants to come. It's turned out real nice. I think it's a good-looking project. And of course, you and I have a meeting, I think, Wednesday down at Horn Creek.
That's the morning of.
Well, yeah, it's the morning of, yeah. And then.
Creek might be real big by Wednesday morning.
Well, it, it may do it, yeah. And the, and then I was going to go down there to check the bridges out at Bean Shoals that afternoon. But, and I just want to say real quick, I was glad that the legislature last week funded the, or cleared the waitlist on the opportunity scholarships. I think that's very important. I want to say I'm very proud of Surrey County's public schools. However, I do believe that overall public schools have an, an image problem. They have a public relations problem. And I think most people know what that it's all about and I'm not going to go into it here tonight. I want to say too that they passed the Senate Bill 10 requiring sheriffs to cooperate with Immigrations and Customs Enforcement. And I think that's a big help for North Carolina. Obviously, the goofball counties like Wake and Mecklenburg and some of those places that love foreign criminals in their cities were opposed to it. But nevertheless, common sense won out at the end and they passed it. So I think that's positive. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Johnson?
I, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, the crowd did get a little thin and we appreciate those that have come and those that have gone and all you folks that stuck around with us. And it was good to see county government at work again. And we appreciate, again, we, what, what, what honors for those EMS saves, quite amazing. And some good honors for our inspection folks and their accomplishments and their selections on some state levels. And, you know, we've got some wonderful people working in, in for Surrey County and for all of our hardworking citizens. And we appreciate them all. As, as Mr. Johnson says, it's good to be in Surrey County and live in Surrey County. We appreciate all you folks and all of your service and your attendance here tonight. May you have safe travels home. And with that and without close being necessary tonight, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, motions, motions everywhere. Motion, Commissioner Marion second, Commissioner Goins. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.